Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this August 1st regular meeting of the Zion City Council's order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Item, excuse me, Pastor Doug Carlson from Grace Missionary Church is here to lead us in prayer this evening.
God in heaven, we thank you so much for the authority that you have placed over us in several important areas. Thank you, Father, for the authority of government, for these men and women, those that have been elected, those that have been chosen, hired to do the work of our city, the important work, and we thank you for that beyond the death. We thank you, pray, Father God, you help us as a society and as a city to live up to the ideals that we just pledged allegiance to our flag. Pray, Father God, to pray for the peace of our community and to be part of that peace. And pray, Lord, that you keep those who are watching over us safe in their duties. Thank you for our police officers, firemen, women, Father, those who watch over us. Thank you for the armed services, of course, in a larger, broader way, watch over us. And in that time and in that space that's provided, help us, Lord, to live a life that pleases you, that is fair and honest to one another, and that accomplishes the things you want us to do as a city and as a community and as individuals. Pray it all in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Pastor Carlson. Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Second, motion by Frierson, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five to zip. Item number five, Public Hearing. Is there a motion to proceed to the public hearing?
So moved, second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Director Conway is going to provide us with the content for the public hearing this evening.
This hearing is regarding the annual appropriation ordinance for the city of Zion. Your attach represents that ordinance for our 2023-2024 fiscal year. The city needs to pass an appropriation ordinance annually in order to have the legal authority to spend money. The ordinance uses the city's operating budget as a guideline. There are contingency line items in the different funds within the ordinance in the case there should be an unknown or emergency situation in which additional funds must be used. The total appropriation ordinance is typically higher than the amount of funds that will actually be expended unless there is a major emergency situation. The total amount of the 2023-2024 fiscal year appropriation ordinance is $59,452,584. This ordinance has been on file and available for viewing in the clerk's office.
Right, do we have any questions from any of our commissioners about the ordinance or actually from our members that are attending the council meeting this evening? All right, with that, we have a motion.
Close the meeting, right?
Yes, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries, public hearing, the appropriation ordinance is closed. Item number six is Citizens' Comments, as we're waiting for Chief Barton to move rapidly toward the podium. All right. We have, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name, Edward?
Aya.
Aya. You can come up, you've got three minutes to address the issue that you'd want to talk about. As a city council, we might not respond to it during the council meeting, but if it's an issue that has to be dealt with, we will address it with you either during our departmental commentary or someone will contact you after the meeting. All right.
So my name is Edward, and I have a newish residence at Zion. My wife and I just moved to the city this past November. And we left this door to a vacant multifamily complex. It's been abandoned, from what I understand, a handful of years. And it's, I understand, it caught fire and was a wall in the midst of being constructed. And since that time, it has, of course, been a place to go for some people to damage the property, tear glass, stuff like that. And since the springtime, my wife and I have, since we work from home, we have both heard and seen, mainly young people, ranging from middle school age to young adults that do just that, they kind of occupy the property and trespass essentially, causing damage, causing a ruckus, several firecrackers climbing the antenna tower. And I remember pretty deep since the incident, the police just so they can, you know, try and deter them from coming. And since the latest incident was passed by, there haven't been any more of them. The police actually were successful in finding some of the trespassers. They talked to them for a good while. So I just wanted to call attention to that, just because, of course, we most certainly don't want to have a repeat or see a repeat of the catch and fire or anything like that, just being next to the property. And also, I'm not sure what kind of efforts have been successful to contact the owner of the property or something like that, to see if he perhaps is looking to sell or what else is going on with all that. But I'm more than happy to try and help with perhaps finding a buyer in the event he's looking to sell, just so something more constructive can be done with the property, whatever that may be. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you, Edward.
So where do you get your address?
916 Shiloh.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll speak just briefly on it, and we'll talk about it, city comments, departmental comments. One of your neighbors came in our last city council meeting, and we gave them an update on what's happening with the property, which we'll do that. Director Ironson and our police chief are here, so we'll speak with you after the council meeting about that. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Item number seven, Consent Agenda.
Approval of minutes for a regular meeting held on July 18, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved?
Second.
Motion by McDowell and second by Frierson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip.
Bills vouchers 1/4, 3797 through 143913 drawn on Hunter International Bank. Total $1,496,480.93.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. If any of you are curious as to why I hesitate when I say, is there a motion after the motion, I was told by our city clerks that sometimes I go through it really fast, and she's writing things down, so I'm slowing things down so she can write the names down. All right, just a matter of procedure. All right, item number eight, Consider Passing Resolution as follows. Item eight, A Temporary Road Closure, Zion Benton Labor Day Parade per Chief Barton. It's back. Can you run that back?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The Special Events Committee is sponsoring the Labor Day Parade in the city of Zion on Monday, September 4th, 2023. The parade will require the temporary road closure of Sheridan Road from 23rd Street to 31st Street from noon to 3:30 p.m. Section 4-408 of the Illinois Highway Code authorizes the Illinois Department of Public Works and Buildings to issue permits to local authorities to temporarily close portions of the state highways for such public purposes or needs, and parades, and local celebrations. Staff respectfully requests a resolution to be passed to submit a request to the Illinois Department of Public Works and Buildings for permission to close Sheridan Road between the streets of 23rd and 31st on Monday, September 4th, 2023, for the period mentioned.
Okay, is there a motion to pass a resolution for the Labor Day Parade, road closure? So moved?
Second.
Motion by McDowell and second by Holmes. Any questions or comments from our commissioners?
I'm glad to see the parade is coming back.
Yes, that's why I said, welcome back. Everybody's been wondering about the parade. We had to shut it down during COVID, and of course, the unfortunate incident in Highland Park of last year was just horrific, and we decided not to hold our parade. But our Special Events Commission has been working on this to bring it back bigger and better this year, so we're happy to have it back. Chief Barton, could you just talk with our people here about some of the security that will be in place for the parade? We've had a couple of people, as you know, have talked to us when we're having nostalgia days. What kind of security do we have in place for these events?
Yeah, so we will have more officers working during nostalgia days. For example, we had over 20 officers. Whether you saw them all or not, they may not have been wearing uniforms. So we'll have a large contingent of police officers, either both uniformed and non, on the parade route or along the parade route. Additionally, we work with our partners, and I won't go into how we do it, but our partners at the state level that help us monitor some of the social media traffic and viral threats that we often see in other communities. And we monitor to see if those are going to be present or appear present in our neck of the woods. Additionally, we work with other agencies to have a plan in place in case there's an emergency that comes up. We have cars and officers ready to go and allocate towards our community. That's about, that's the primary of it. There's a lot of minutia in between all those things, but it's a big part of it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number nine, 9A, is Making Appropriations for the City in Zion for Fiscal Year Beginning May 1st, 2023 and Ending April 30th, 2024 per Director Conway.
Mayor, Commissioners, I request approval of the appropriation ordinance for the city of Zion for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023 and ending April 30th, 2024 in the amount of $59,452,584.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the appropriations for May 1, 2023 through April 30th, 2024.
Motion by Commissioner Fisher?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDowell. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number nine B regarding the disposition of surplus property in the police department per Chief Barton.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. I respectfully request the following vehicles be declared as surplus property and approved to be auctioned through the Clinton Auto Auction. Squad 40, it's a 2004 Ford, yeah, I said that right, 2004 Ford Crown Victoria, and then Squad 39, which is also a 2004 Ford Crown Victoria with the attachment numbers. Both vehicles listed above are in a state of disrepair and/or cost prohibitive to maintain operationally.
Is there a motion for the disposition of surplus property? So moved? Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Questions or comments from the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item 9C regarding the disposition of surplus property, old city phones per Commissioner Fisher.
This is very, very brief. We recently upgraded the phone system for the city, and so we have a lot of old phones that have no intrinsic value, and so they will be disposed of as part of our Zion cleanup day. They'll be added to the electronic recycling. So I would ask for a motion to approve this ordinance.
All right, is there a motion to approve the disposition of surplus property, the old city phone?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number 10, Discussion, Authorization, and Approval. 10A, Tabulation of Bids, 2023 Police Department Parking Lot Improvements per Chief Barton.
Again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached are the bid results from the 2023 Police Department Parking Lot Improvements project. The lowest responsible bidder was Manavol Construction Company Incorporated out of Ingleside, Illinois. Staff request and recommends awarding the project to Manavol Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $93,100. Funding for this project is a budgeted item in the approved fiscal year 24 Capital Projects Fund. Copies of the bid tabulations are posted in the city of Zion's website and attached in your packet.
All right, is there a motion to approve the bids for the parking lot improvements?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments by the commissioners? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number 10B, Tabulation of Bids, 2023 CDBG Sidewalk Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Bid opening was held on July 5th for the 2023 CDBG Sidewalk Program. The following bids were received. Total recovery, $112,950. Alliance Contractors, $162,875. Lake County CDBG program requires a minimum of three bidders. We have spoken with Lake County, and they have approved to waive this requirement and accept the two bidders. Staff request and recommends awarding the project to the lowest responsible bidder, Schroder and Schroder, from Spoky, Illinois, in the amount of $112,950. Funding for this project is a budgeted item within the fiscal year 24 Street and Budget Fund and the Lake County Community Development Block Program. Copies of the bid tabulations are posted on the city website.
All right, is there a motion to approve the tabulation bids for the sidewalk program?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number 10C, Consider a Proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering for the Construction, Observation, and Engineering Service for the 2023 Street and Alley Program per Director Roberts.
Thank you again, sir. Attached is a proposal for the Construction, Observation, and Engineering Services for the 2023 Street and Alley Program. Services will include the observation of the progress and quality of the executed work and determination of the work proceeding in accordance with the contract documents. Staff request and recommend approving proposal for Construction, Observation, and Engineering Services from Christopher Burke Engineering for a cost of $85,295. The service is a budgeted item within the fiscal year 24 Motor Field Tax Line.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Holmes and second by Fisher. Questions or comments from the commissioners?
One question, so does this flow back to the recent approval that we made? And did we also go with alternate one for that approval? I don't recall, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right, any additional questions, comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries five zip. Item number 11, Departmental Commentary. Director Ironson?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a comment regarding 918 Shiloh. We made an attempt to reach out to the owner without a sound at the time. We have same state contact with him, so I think we need to immediately. And secondly, Saturday, coming up in our conference, but electronics and tires drop off at the city cleanup. It's 8:12 p.m. at the 2D Galley location, same spot there. You can drop off electronics, tires, or both.
And in order to make sure this is for Zion residents, so if you do show up, have your driver's license or your city sticker will let us know that you are a driver's, that you're a Zion resident. This has been a terrific event for us over the last several years of people that are cleaning out garages and sometimes basements and getting rid of old things that kind of take up a lot of space. We've been contemplating, haven't come to a decision yet about having two of these, one in the, well, summer now and possibly after Labor Day. But make sure that all your friends that are trying to get rid of all their electronic disposal, tires, will be there on Friday, excuse, yeah, excuse me, Saturday, early, 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock on 28th Street. And we'll be out there.
And just to add, Director Ironson, so if you know of a senior or someone with a disability that needs assistance, they can call the office and put in a request to have someone come out and help gather those things and truck them in to the site.
Okay, all right. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Earlier today, I received a notification from the University of Sycamore Road. Longway Route 173 will be closed tomorrow morning starting 0900 to 1430. Thanks to Chief Street, he helped me out and announced it on the blackboard for us. Hopefully, people will receive that notification. This is supposed to only be a one-day event, so the reroute will be taking you north through Grand Bay Road up to Russell, down to Delaney, and then back down.
All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Street?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Piggybacking off that just a little bit, so yeah, we put out the blackboard notice on that, and we talked about this a couple of meetings ago. We hope that everybody maintains their proper numbers on blackboard. If not, feel free to reregister or contact me, and I can help you. We get a report when we put those blackboard messages out, and we had 9,400 phones registered, which seems great. Only 2,023 of those calls were successful. And it breaks down why, kind of why, what the reasons for the non-successful, such as no answer or bad number. And so it's helpful to have that info, but we just use that as an urge to make sure your info on blackboard connect is current. And again, I can help you with that. Call me or email me. My info is on the city website, cityofzion.com. Second thing I was going to mention, really not a big deal, hardly even worthy for a city council meeting, but we did get some calls over the past few months on not having our flag and flagpole up at Station 2 along Lewis Avenue. Happy to report that we finally got that project completed. We got a new flag and pole installed this week. The old one was bent in the wind last fall, and we, of course, can't fly a flag on a damaged pole. And then through the winter and the budgeting process, it's just not a real quick process to throw up a new flagpole on a big property. So we're back in business out of Station 2 with our nice new flagpole, I'm happy to say so.
All right, Chief Street, for some of the people that are new to our city council meeting, could you tell them a little bit more about the Blackboard Connect and the function it serves for the city?
Absolutely, so the Blackboard Connect system is set up for us to get notices out of, can be either outreach news items or emergent road closure, such as this one tomorrow. We don't use it very often, so you're not going to get spammed to your phone or your email more than, rarely more than once a month or so at the most. Very easy to set up with your phone number and email addresses through, again, cityofzion.com. On the left-hand side, there's a box that says Blackboard Connect. Or navigate toward the Fire Department section and find my contact information. I'll be happy to help you through that if need be. So it's a great way for us to get news out to the city, and again, we don't use it very often, only when it's really necessary.
All right, thank you, Chief Street.
You're welcome.
Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Just a couple of things, I hate to say it, but we're winding down summer already, and with that, we have schools starting. So if there's anybody that you feel that you have in need and you want to help them, please let us know. We'll try to make those connections for school supplies or other things. Also, there's going to be some football games starting back up with the new football field at the Zion High School, so I encourage you to go out there and take a look. And then the last thing I had was fireworks are going to be on Sunday, April, August 6th. And just a reminder that while the city and the Park District collaborate on a fireworks Independence Day celebration, your own fireworks are illegal if they are purchased outside of the state. And we had that come up in our adjudication hearing on Thursday last, and that was one of the comments that was made. So we, you know, while we will still enforce our city ordinance on fireworks, and we, yes, we will have a celebration of our Independence Day on July 4th, which is now August 6th, but it's still illegal to pop those fireworks, and you will be issued a citation.
All right, thank you, Chief Barton. Director Conway?
Good evening, again. Not a whole lot to report. Money's coming in, money's going out of the accounting office, so everything's going good. Now that we, at the last meeting, approved all of the budgets, we're working on getting the budgets into the general ledger, so you guys can start getting reports, budgets versus actuals. And I actually had a chance to talk to Commissioner Frierson before the meeting, and we're going to try this. I was going to wait for quarter, but I think by next meeting, we're going to try June with a little summary page and see how it works. And I'm happy to suggest suggestions on things that might make it clearer or easier to read than whatever spits out of the computer. We can always manipulate the way things are summarized for you. So next meeting, look forward to a budget versus actual for the first two months of our fiscal year.
All right, thank you, Director Conway. Nothing tonight, Mayor. All right, Commissioner Frierson? Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Fisher?
Oh, see everybody at the recycling event on Saturday.
Yes, and that's item number 12, is Announcement, of course, August 5th, 8 a.m. to noon, City of Zion Electronics Tire and Bulk Item Drop Off, 2771. Galley, again, just have to show your Zion driver's license or have a city sticker, and you will be able to drop off those items. Item number six, 6 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at the Zion Park District, the Zion Park District Independence the Zion Park District Independence Day Celebration, which was canceled or rescheduled as a result of a weather report that we received. And of course, of course, after it was rescheduled, the rain did not come. I won't say anything about the weather people, valuable service. But it's been rescheduled for August 6th, 6:00 to 9:30, and it features Bela Kane. Now, they're a country, they feature country music, but they play a lot of top 40s music. And last year, the concert was absolutely phenomenal. There was a great turnout from our residents. Everybody had a great time. And we expect more of the same on August 6th. So come on out, bring your friends, bring some food. There'll be food vendors out there. Be plenty to drink, refreshments. I don't know about alcohol. But come on out and celebrate Independence Day and enjoy meeting some of your Zion residents. August 11th at 2:00, if you haven't had a chance to register, for the Coalition for Healthy Communities For Our Youth Golf Outing. This used to be the Caddy Classic, and the name of it was changed. It's at 2:00. It's at Shepherd's Crook. It's only nine holes. And all of the money that is raised goes to support the youth in our community. And we are still looking for golfers to sign up. Commissioner Frierson, you want to talk a little bit about the sign up? He is the president of the Coalition of Healthy Communities.
Yep. Golfers, hole sponsors. If you go to the Shepherd's Crook website, it is an event there that you can just click on their page and sign up electronically. You can set your foursome, or you can also email me at rffrierson@zbchc.com if you'd like to be a hole sponsor. We need to get those into our vendors so we can get any new signs made to represent any hole sponsors that we get. So look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, it's a fun event. We'll have some golf games at the holes. Chief Barton has been gracious enough to help us create some games and fun out on each of the holes. But it also gives us all an opportunity, some of the community leaders, to interact with some of the youth that are there and get a chance to talk to them about their hopes, dreams. We've had some people that have talked to us about their direction of life and wanting to maybe get involved with city government or learning a little bit more about our fire or police department. So it's a nice event. And so if you can support it, like golf, come out and spend some time with us on August 11th. August 15th at 6:00 p.m., there's a Zion Township Board Meeting here, right here. And August 15th at 7:00 p.m. following that, a Zion City Council Meeting. With that, that's all I have for announcement, unless Mary Lou usually lets me know if I missed anything. But I guess I haven't. So with that, item 13 is, is there a motion to adjourn? Shall move.
Second.
All right. Motion by Frierson and second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Meeting is over.